The Columbus City Council meeting for April 21st, 2025 will now come to order. In compliance with the Open Meeting Act, a copy of this act is posted in this meeting room. Madam Clerk, would you please call a roll?
Bulkeley.
Here.
Alarcon.
Here.
Barr.
Here.
Beamer.
Here.
Jablonsky.
Here.
Lopez. Polinski.
Here.
Roth.
Here.
Schilling.
Here.
Mayor Bulkeley, the roll has been called.
Thank you. Mr. Council President.
Our Father, thank you for the opportunity to serve our fellow citizens. Please give us your wisdom and guidance to make proper decisions entrusted to this governmental body. May our conduct show respect, honor, and courtesy to each other as well as to all our citizens. Amen.
Amen.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming, whose broad stripes and bright stars do the perilous fight? For the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming, and the rocket's red glare upons bursting in air gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave, o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. I welcome everyone to tonight's council meeting. If at any time during our meeting this evening, anyone in the audience would like to come forward and address any item on our agenda, we'd welcome you to please come to the podium, give your name, your address, and we would ask that you keep any comments to five minutes or less. With that, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Item four, consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a city council member or citizen requests, in which event the item will be removed from consent status and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Item 4A, minutes of the April 7th, 2025 Board of Equalization meeting. Item 4B, minutes of the April 7th, 2025 City Council meeting. Item 4C, minutes of the April 7th, 2025 Community Development Agency meeting. Item 4D, renewal of solid waste hauling licenses for the following: A Sanitation Services Incorporated, Beamer Lumber LLC, Doing Business as Discount Dumpster, Hilltop Roll Off LLC, Doing Business as Callaway Roll Off, S2 Roll Offs, Refuse and Recycling, UNI Sanitation LLC, and Waste Connections of Nebraska Incorporated, contingent on bond requirements being met. Item 4E, resolution number R25-61, authorizing the mayor as the chief elected official to sign the Nebraska Emergency Management Agency Recovery Section Authorized Representative Designation of the Hazard Mitigation Program Grant, application for the Loop River Regional Flood Evaluation. Item 4F, resolution number R25-62, authorizing payment of various improvement projects. Item 4G, Finance Department Reports, and Item 4H, payroll and bills on file. Is there anything you would like removed from consent status?
Mr. Mayor, move that the items on the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve any discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes. Brings us up to special presentations. We have a proclamation this evening. If you allow me, I would take the moment to read this, please. Proclamation in recognition of National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time requiring the prompt response of law enforcement, fire, and emergency medical services. And whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt and accurate response of public safety telecommunications is critical to ensuring the safety of our citizens and our responders. And whereas public safety telecommunications are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas public safety communicators play a vital role in the chain of emergency response, providing critical information and resources to law enforcement and emergency personnel. And whereas the professionalism, dedication, and compassion of public safety telecommunications is essential to the safety and well-being of our community. Now therefore, I, James B. Bulkeley, Mayor of the City of Columbus, Nebraska, do hereby proclaim the week of April 13th through April 19th, 2025, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Columbus, Nebraska, in honor of the men and women of the Columbus-Platte County Joint E-91 Communication Center, whose diligence and professionalism is critical in keeping our city and citizens safe. We are fortunate to have some of those telecommunications here with us this evening. Please come forward and introduce yourself. I'm putting every one of you on the spot.
I'm Raquel Vazquez, and I've been a telecommunicator for five years.
I'm Laura Bonilla, I've been doing it for four years.
Lynn Swoboda, 28.
Cindy Wheezy, 20 years.
Thank you very much for everything you do.
Item 7A, public hearing application from Ferrenger and Milock LLP to rezon property located north of East 19th Street between East 11th Avenue and East 12th Avenue from B2 General Commercial District to MLC 1 Light Industrial District, and to amend the future land use map of the comprehensive plan. The Planning Commission recommends approval.
Is there anyone here tonight to speak against this public hearing? Is there anyone here to speak for this public hearing? Mr. Milock.
Good evening. Jason Milock, Ferrenger and Milock, 39, 19, 25th Street. Just wanted to be available if there's any questions. This is a rezoning between East 11th and 12th Avenue, a property that would, we're asking to be completely rezoned to MLC 1, which would allow as a permitted use the intended development of convenience storage units in that, on that piece of property. I do have Ethan Brueland of Charity Storage will be the developer of that project available if there's any questions.
Counsel, am I any questions? This was a item in front of our planning and zoning committee a week ago this evening?
That's correct. At that time that we made that presentation, and there weren't anyone that appeared with any opposition.
All right. Seeing none, I entertain a quote.
Move the public hearing be closed.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay.
Item 7A1, ordinance number 25-04, approving the rezoning.
Mr. Mayor, I move that rules be suspended in ordinance number 25004, be read by number only.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve an ordinance number 25-04, or suspend the rules, and read ordinance 25-04 by number only. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Ordinance number 25-04.
Mr. Mayor, I move ordinance number 25-04 being adopted.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number 25-04. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes. Brings us up to reports on city offices.
Item 9A, update of the Nebraska Department of Transportation's 23rd Street Reconstruction Project. Our city engineer, Rick Bogus.
So it's early, but everything's on schedule as planned. As you know, 23rd Avenue crossing was closed this last week. What they were doing is they were putting the water line through the intersection. Then they put some temporary pavement back in there. They're trying to do everything they can to keep intersections open like they did, you know, last year and so forth. So it's back open now. We'll have to close in the future again at some point when they do the actual paving, but for now it's all open. So they're working on the water line, working east to west. They're also putting in storm sewer in. Then they're going to pretty soon start the paving preparations, again, starting from the east and go into the west. So long term, it hasn't changed. They hope to have the roads open in late August, early September. Doesn't mean the project will be totally complete by then. They'll still have to do things after that, so it's probably going to be November, but it's going to be earlier than the last few years. So it's on schedule and moving forward.
Any questions for Mr. Bogus? All right, thank you on that one. You have another one coming up here.
Item 9B, update on the Loop River Bridge South Bridges project.
This one's real early, getting started, but if you've been that direction, you know that they are doing the crossover lanes right now down there. And their plan is the week of May 5th, the traffic will be moved to the North Brown Bridge. So there'll be one lane of traffic in each direction of the North Brown Bridge, and the South Brown Bridge will be, will be closed. And they're going to start then prepping that bridge for demolition and removal. There are some things they can do now up till August 1st. They can't get into the river till after August 1st, so there's some things they can do now. They can build a temporary bridge during that time for construction purposes and things of that nature. And then I don't have an exact date yet because they don't have one, but in sometime probably later in May, the Pawnee Park undercrossing will close. Need to construct the, the south side of that. So that'll probably take them through, probably through July, maybe that first part of August again. So when that happens, the trail that currently, as you know, crosses underneath the bridge will close because it'll be taken down the bridge, and the, and the trail then will be where this undercrossing was. So traffic won't be able to go east and west through Pawnee Park for a long period of time. In fact, the one way on the north side will be that way until they're estimating about April of 2027, because that's when the new bridge will open. And then they'll throw you on the new bridge with one lane traffic as they patch up that northbound bridge and railings and things like that. So again, it's early, they're optimistic, things seem to be going fine.
You had mentioned the, the date there, and I was going to ask, is it fair to say that once the crossover happens, there will be two-way traffic on one bridge for the next two and a half to three years?
Yep, they're guessing April 27.
Any other questions for Mr. Bogus?
Rick, what's, what's the plan for under the bridge on the river's bed with all the traffic, four-wheelers and airboats? Do they have a, are they going to let them pass? Are they going to have an area for them to pass? Are they not going to allow anybody to pass?
Yeah, so they, so the state worked with the, with the Airboat Association as an example during that timeframe. So there, they will be places for them to pass. There will be times that they are not, because what they plan on doing is blasting the different sections to get it down. So obviously during those points, they won't be able to do it. But they tried to work with them to do the best they can to try to have areas for them to pass as much as possible, but again, it won't be 100% of the time.
Any other questions for Mr. Bogus? Thank you. Look forward to your next update.
Item 9C, 2024 Tax Increment Financing Report. Finance Director Heather Linsley.
Hello. It's our annual year, our annual time to go over the TIF report. So the first two pages of the report are just kind of a narrative of what has happened in the past year and its calendar year 2024 activity. We currently have 26 projects that have been financed either in whole or in part that were TIF projects. Of those 26 projects, the estimated project cost of those 26 is $321 million. So that's a lot of project costs. Item number three wants to go through the numbers, which are on page four and five, and I'll get there in a second. Item number four wants to know how many projects have been paid in full. And in '24, we had no projects paid in full. We do have two projects coming down that will probably both close in probably a year to a little bit more than a year. And both of those projects, one of them is going to pay off five years in advance, and the other one will be four years in advance. So that's a return back to the tax base that was rather quick on both of those. In 2024, we added two new projects, and one was the Innate Concepts, and then the other one was Vitality Village. Those were the two new projects. So then in the matrix, you know, this is a report that we've been doing for probably three or four years. And it lists each of the projects that are involved. It lists the development area, the year the project was approved, the amount of financing, projected costs, base valuation. And then we've added the number, the amount of taxes paid in the year. So I do want to point out, so of these 26 projects, right, the base valuation, which is what the value of those 26 properties were before the TIF happened and TIF started. So the base value was $123 million for those 26. And as of the '24 valuation, so last fall, those projects are now valued at $305 million. So two and a half times what they were to begin with prior to the TIF. So that's a pretty notable increase and a return to the Columbus community. The far right column is how many, who's been paid in full, and you can see the bottom two, those were the oldest. Those have been paid in full. And then the two projects that I referenced were the West Gate, which is the Hoppy Lobby, and the NBC Capital, which is Ramada. Those are the two projects that are going to pay off here within probably a year, a little over a year. So it's a lot of information. A lot of these projects have been going on for several years, so we're just collecting the tax and paying the tax, not a whole lot of activity. At the top of that matrix are our newest projects, and you can see we have four of them that have not divided yet, so they have not split. So you're not going to see a base valuation on any of those yet, but I project that at least two of those will, will get split in July. We have until July 30th. And so the next year's report, you will see activity coming in.
Typically, the term is 10, 15 years?
15 years.
15 total?
If it would happen to be extremely blighted, you get an extra five, and you could do 20. So all of ours are 15-year projects, and all but just a couple are ahead of payment schedules, so.
And according to current state law, there's no land in the city of Columbus that qualifies for extreme blight.
Correct.
Just regular blight.
Yeah, or just regular blight.
Are any of the, are any of the projects significantly behind schedule in their originally scheduled payout?
For the, for collecting the tax?
Yes.
There's one that's dragging a little bit, but not, I mean, it was a very low note, like $160,000 or something like that, so it's not very noticeable. But all of the rest of them are, are paying ahead right now. So that just means the value of their property exceed the estimate that was placed when we did the redevelopment plan. So.
Any other questions for staff? Appreciate it. Thank you very much, Heather. Very, very helpful information. Very, very helpful information. All right, I would entertain a, do we need to, do we need to have a motion? Or it's just, it's just general information? Okay, thank you. We will move on to reports of council committees.
Item 10A, Public Property Safety and Works Committee of April 21st, 2025. 10A1 is a request of Clark Grant on behalf of Habitat for Humanity to extend the time period for completion of public improvements for Centennial Park Eighth addition from the previously extended date of April 17th, 2025 to April 17th of 2027. The committee recommends approval.
Mr. Mayor, move adoption of this report?
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt this committee report. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 10A2, request of Clark Grant on behalf of Ferguson Properties Incorporated to extend the time period for completion of public improvements for Park Place 10th addition from the previously extended date of April 17th, 2025 to April 17th, 2026. The committee recommends approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt this committee report. Any discussion?
How many times are we allowed to extend, or is that our purview?
It's up to you.
Because I see we're extending again for the same reason we extended previously. Makes me wonder how the negotiations are going with the gas company and the property owner. Where it lies?
I don't have a current status update, Rick, do you?
I did talk to the gas company, and they are in negotiations with them. And I've also talked to Ferguson Properties and Clark Grant, the attorney. And I know they are making actual, I know what your question is, they are making actual progress. Maybe not so before, but they are at this point. So I think it's going to get resolved sooner than later, hopefully within this year extension timeframe.
I know at the property meeting, Mr. Grant spoke on behalf of Ferguson Properties saying that it, he assumed, believed there was an agreement between the parties, and they were working out the details of that agreement.
I guess I'm just curious, how do you miss a gas line like that?
It wasn't missed, there was discussion on cost. Because developers require to pay the cost for infrastructure, private infrastructure like that movement. They had to move this line, so they knew about it. Discussion was the cost, and I think that's where it is today. But then they have made progress on that now.
All right, any other discussion? We have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 10A3, cost share of paving and infrastructure for 2025.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this committee report. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 10A4, amend city code regarding firework discharge time for December 29th and 30th stated on the required signage at all fireworks sale locations and various other changes that align with the city's current inspection procedures. The committee recommends approval.
Mr. Mayor, move the report be adopted. Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt this committee report. Any discussion?
I guess I'm a person that is not in favor of any more than one day to shoot fireworks off. So if I vote against it, it's only because the 29th and 30th, I think, is unnecessary in this case.
Understood. And just for public knowledge, most of this was put together to combine and make ours kind of cleaner and cahoots with the state requirements. And when our inspections are being done, they can be more worried about inspecting. But I understand what you're saying, Mr. Jablonski. All right, any other questions or comments?
I have a question when I read through this, just so I read it right. We're moving the enforceable time from midnight to 10:00 PM, correct? Or that's always been 10 o'clock and it was just stated incorrectly?
Mr. Clover, would you please come forward?
I can probably answer this too. It's always been 10:00 PM. But when we passed it in 2018 to add the signage at the sales locations, we put it as, it was recorded as midnight, and it's supposed to be 10:00 PM. So it's always been 10:00 PM.
Good job, Mr. Clover. Thanks, Sharif. Are you good, AJ?
Yep.
All right, any other questions? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 10A5, Traffic Control Device Committee Reports for the First Quarter of 2025.
Mr. Mayor, move the report be adopted.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt the Traffic Control Device Committee Report for First Quarter 2025. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes. Brings us up to new business.
Item 13A, application from Smash the Trash Sanitation LLC for solid waste hauling license.
Moves that the application from Smash the Trash Sanitation LLC for solid waste hauling license be approved.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes. Got to love the name.
Item 13B, quote from Skydio Incorporated, the amount of $62,861.40 for two drones for the police department. This is CIP number two five dash three seven.
Mr. Mayor, I move the quote from Skydio Inc. for two drones, be accepted.
Second. We have a motion and a second to accept the quote from Skydio. Any discussion? Captain Multrick, you're in the room. Come tell us a little bit about this purchase, please.
So the Skydio drone purchase is for two drones. Originally, when we had budgeted and made this request, we were going to buy one drone, a bigger drone from DJI. It was going to be a more, bigger platform. But since we have to steer away from DJI products because they're Chinese manufactured, it became obvious that I had to look for US-made products. US-made products are a little more expensive. But the Skydio Drone Company cooperates with Axon. Axon is a major manufacturer of law enforcement equipment. And they do body worn cameras and the tasers and everything else that we utilize right now. We don't utilize their body worn cameras, but their tasers and stuff. So I got ahold of a representative and talked to Skydio directly. Their drones are fantastic. They're state-of-the-art drones. What we're going to be able to do with those drones is nothing short of amazing. Things that I didn't think we could do with drones. We can overfly the Dyke and give three-dimensional pictures for you guys. And we will do that. But as you can see, I'm going to get two drones with four battery packs, live streaming capabilities, which we never had before, where we can sit in the command post and we can watch from what's going on with the drone live. Before, you could only look at your phone and watch it from the controller. Now we can pipe that back into the command center. It's going to give us some other capabilities down the road. The X-10 Skydio drones are capable of sitting in housings. So in the future, we could mount these drones on top of the police department and deploy them autonomously. So it's going to give us some expansion capabilities.
Awesome. I mean, other than being a, just like a kid at Christmas, this sounds awesome.
Well, yeah. The technology that is being implemented with Skydio is nothing short than miraculous. The AI capabilities and the ability to update these remotely. And the fact that they've teamed up with Axon to provide these services is going to allow us to expand in the future. And we could actually, if we went to Axon body worn cameras, we could tie them all together into one package and have a seamless picture of the scene.
Sounds like some great equipment. Any questions for?
I probably gave you more information than you really wanted to know.
Thanks, Doug.
When we get them, we'd like to have a demonstration. When we get them, we'll expect the demonstration.
By the way, we are up and running with our de-escalation trainer. So I will be sending out an invite to all the city council members to partake in some scenarios.
Awesome. All right, appreciate it. Thank you, Doug. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 13C, quote from PNR Sales and Service, and the amount of $17,750 for a UTV side-by-side for the wastewater treatment plant. This is CIP number two five dash five five.
Mr. Mayor, I move the quote from PNR Sales and Service for a UTV, be accepted.
Second. We have a motion and a second to accept the quote, PNR Sales and Service. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 13D.
No.
We haven't got a chance to vote.
We haven't voted yet.
I'm looking at the screen I'm probably not supposed to look at then, huh?
There we go.
Motion passes.
Item 13D, comments from the mayor and city council members in compliance with the Open Meetings Act. No discussion may be held on this item.
Any council members with comments this afternoon, this evening? Yes?
Yes, I'd like to inform the community and the council that on May 1st, we're having National Day of Prayer. And Vertical Voices are putting on a presentation at 6:00. And also during the day, so I think starting at 10:00 AM, there will be services that, I think there's eight or nine pastors that are going to put on services for a half hour through the day. So it's going to be a nice, nice program.
Yeah, National Day of Prayer has always been very, very neat in Columbus, done very well.
And the Fine Surtoma Club will have flags out that day too.
Awesome, awesome.
Mr. Ritter is doing an outstanding job of promoting this thing and putting it together. As soon as we get done here, I've got to go practice singing, so.
All right, any other comments this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to resolutions.
Item 14A, Resolution Number R25-63, accepting the deed of dedication for Zebak Edition, 38th Street East of 30th Avenue. The Planning Commission recommends approval.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the, for the, excuse me. Motion of Resolution Number R25-63 be adopted.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution Number R25-63. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 14B, Resolution Number R25-64, awarding the community block grant funds to Kiara Zimba for downtown revitalization.
Mr. Mayor, I move that Resolution Number R25-64 be adopted.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution Number R25-64. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 14C, Resolution Number R25-65, awarding community development block grant funds to Crystal Klug for downtown revitalization.
Move that Resolution Number R25-65 be adopted.
Second. Have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution Number R25-65. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 14D, Resolution Number R25-66, approving the professional services agreement with HDR Engineering Incorporated in the amount of $149,995 for 8th Street and 12th Avenue intersection design. This is CIP number two five dash three five.
Mr. Mayor, move for the adoption of Resolution R25-66.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number R25-66. Any discussion? I think it's worth saying what this is about. Rick, please?
So this is the, they want to look at the intersection of 8th Street and 12th Avenue with all the development there. We all know that even today, that intersection's tight in what it is. And so this design will evaluate the intersection for potential roundabout options. There's a couple of different types of roundabouts that will be discussed. We want to look into what land acquisitions might be, if that would occur. They'll come up with cost estimates, they come up with a good concept. You know, we'll be talking to stakeholders groups and public classroom input and things of that. But that's what we're trying to do, is get ahead of it. You know, there's, as you guys know, from east of there, there'll be several housing developments opening up in the next couple of years, there'll be a lot more traffic. And we know we have a little issue there, so this is the design and the study of that.
So this is, it's getting ahead of the game and coming up with ideas that will then be looked at for possible implementation.
Yep, that's correct.
I mean, but this is not a decision-making at this point. It's gathering the facts, gathering the information. What I'm doing is trying to get ahead of social media saying something's going to happen tomorrow because it's not. What we're doing is we're trying to do some legwork.
Right.
And we will be reaching out to the public for input and then trying to lay out a plan.
You're exactly correct. You're exactly correct.
Any other comments or concerns? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 14E, Resolution Number R25-67, amending the social media policy to not permit public comments on all city-owned Facebook pages.
Mr. Mayor, I move Resolution Number R25-67 be adopted.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution Number R25-dash?
Six.
Six seven. Let me give you a reading of what we, what this is all about. The purpose of the city's social media. The city of Columbus uses social media to expand the reach of city news and updates. Our goal is to provide a clear, trustworthy platform where you can stay informed about the latest city news and happenings. Since launching our Facebook pages in 2011, we've seen a significant increase in false, negative, and harmful comments. Over time, this has become more frequent and has started to compromise the integrity and the purpose of the city's use of Facebook. City Facebook will continue to share news, events, and stories, and we strongly encourage residents to reach out through direct messages. Emails or phone, relevant contact information will be included in every post. While these forms of communication remain open and welcome, comments will be disabled on all future posts. We thank you for understanding that this change in the city's policy, media, in the city's social media policy is being made in an effort to improve everyone's experience with the city's Facebook pages. Any comments or discussion? Seeing? Seeing?
Who, legally, I, I know it's our page and we can do that, but is a First Amendment right to respond, are we, are we going to have some issues with that?
No, because we are telling them that there's a phone number or contact information, they're welcome to respond.
They're just not allowing to have a comment.
Right, they're welcome to, if they have a comment or a concern.
They can comment via a different route.
Right, directly.
Yeah, and that would be the preference. And we, I did have a conversation with legal, too. It ha, it needs to be an all or nothing.
Right.
Right, you can't, that's when we can't censor, right? We can't say this comment's allowed, but this one's not. But if it's, all comments are not allowed, there is no legal issue. But like the mayor said, it's not because we don't want feedback, we want feedback. And honestly, most of the constructive feedback we get from social media is already through direct messages or a phone call or an email. It's the really unproductive communication that comes in the comments. And I think it's just worth stating that every single post, again, will have a relevant contact if anybody has questions or comments or feedback to give.
And this relates to all city Facebook pages?
Yes.
Not just city halls, I mean, the police page, the fire pa, and who all have, whoever has a page related to the city will be controlled in this manner. And again, every contact will be there for anybody that is interested in getting in touch with somebody to have a constructive conversation. All right, any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes. Brings us up to ordinances on their first reading.
Item 15A, Ordinance Number 25-05, Leaving Special Assessments on Street Improvement District Number 184, which is 23rd Street from East 48th Avenue to 54th Avenue, and Street Improvement District Number 189, which is 48th Avenue from 23rd Street to south of the Bradshaw Park entrance.
Mr. Mayor, move that the rules be suspended and Ordinance Number 25-05 be read by number only.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and read Ordinance Number 25-05 by number only. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Ordinance Number 25-05.
Mr. Mayor, move for the adoption of Ordinance Number 25-05?
Second? We have a motion and a second to adopt Ordinance Number 25-05. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay? Motion passes.
Item 15B, Ordinance Number 25-06, Amending Section 133.04 of Chapter 113 of Title 13 of the Columbus City Code Regarding Fireworks Discharge Time for December 29th and 30th Stated on the Required Signage at All Fireworks Sale Locations and Various Other Changes That Align With the City's Current Inspection Procedures. No motion is necessary, this is a first reading.
All right.
So do, do we have still time to change that 29th and 30th date if we wanted to?
Yeah, we would have to.
You would, yeah.
Get together and have that conversation.
But it'd be a part of this?
Or some suggestions.
I know, I know my dog would appreciate it.
All right, so with being on its first reading, it would also be open to the public for any, any comments or information that the public may want.
Two more times, we'll have it, right?
Right. All right, so with no other further discussion on that, we will move on to the adjournment of our meeting. Meeting adjourned. We will quickly go into a community development